This conference will now be recorded.
Call to order the regular council meeting, December 18th, 2023. To order at 7:00 PM. All rise to the pleasure ladies.
Our pleasure ladies, to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it spans, one nation
Under God, indivisible,
with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions or corrections to your agenda tonight? Are there any presentations? None.
Do you want to do a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, I suppose we should.
I'll move, we approve the agenda as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, and we accept the agenda.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner? Motion carried.
Okay. Again, are there any presentations? No. We'll move right into mayor's report. Citizen of the Month. Councilor Webb has the honor.
Aye. Okay, yeah, I had the honor. The second Citizen of the Month this month. That's good. December is a good Christmas present.
Yeah.
So these people are real strangers to all this. I really don't need to introduce them. The reason I picked these candidates for Citizen of the Month is the one big thing was the salmon festival. They have been putting on, been one of the core people putting on the salmon festival for 21 years. And they're passing the torch this year, and I just would kick myself in the behind if they were not acknowledged for all that effort for all this time. Mr. Mitchell, Casey Mitchell, has also donated a lot of his own personal time to run equipment for the city. He was very instrumental down at the skate park. When I went down there, he was on the fat end of that jackhammer when I showed up, remember that? He instantly gave me that job, but, you know, running different pieces of equipment and stuff so we could get that project completed. I think he ended up helping getting the main part of the foundation out, which was a big chore. The grandstands, running the excavator to clean up the grandstands. You know, we don't know what the bids would have been, but I think we had a preliminary estimate of around, what, about mid $30,000? And I think we finished up.
Under 15.
Yeah, under 15. So everybody can do the math there. That's about 20 grand, so. Big kudos. And to Josette Mitchell, the owner of City Administrator. You know, I think people, at times when you're doing something in the community and they don't recognize the difference between, oh, they're getting paid, they're part of the city. No, they're doing this on their own behalf and time and effort. And Sean Gibson, which I talked to Sean, she said, originally, I think you had a group of people that was kind of on the salmon festival committee, and then people drifted away, and lo and behold, we had two people running the show. And then Sean joined you guys. Casey said that she did the vendor work, working with the vendors, which is not always a fun gig to have, so I think Sean was probably a really good person for that job, though. So anyhow, that's why I nominated Casey Mitchell, Josette Mitchell, and Sean Gibson for Citizens of the Month.
And Josette?
If at all.
Thanks, Dale.
Dale should be in the.
I was gonna turn you upside down.
Oh, yeah.
Want to put you in the middle?
Yeah, there we go.
All right.
Ready, one, two, three, do one more. Okay, Denver.
Thanks.
Congratulations, Casey.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Josette.
Well deserved.
Well deserved.
I'm afraid you'll get a stinky basketball kid in the shower.
You're not, you're not stinky. He's still up.
He's like, thanks, Dad, that's recorded.
Thank you, Dale. Congratulations to Josette.
Thank you.
And to Sean Gibson, too. Okay, council committee meeting reports. None? Any council committee meeting reports, other than I have one?
No.
Okay. I attended the senior board meeting last week. And if anyone hasn't been into the senior center lately in the Burkitt Field Room, we now have some really beautiful blinds on all the ones. I think there's about 11 windows there, maybe, possibly. And so really nice blinds that are installed there. And there's talk about them being placed in the dining room, too. So with a generous donation from Randy Holtz for that. So I was nominated to be, take on the president of the senior board, and I accepted. So starting in January, I'll be the president of this senior board. So I attend the meetings anyway, so. They were in need of a president, so I took that on, so. Other than that, things are going well down there. So that's all I have to report, I think, on that, from that committee. Any topics from the floor tonight?
I have one, and that's Jill Holtz.
Okay.
Regarding Measure 110.
Okay. You want to step forward? All you need to do is give your name for the record. And there is a three-minute time limit.
Yeah, it'll probably be that quick.
Okay.
So, thank you, Jill Holtz. I learned, you guys were having a discussion at the November 20th board meeting, and then we'll be, and are working on a resolution to come forward with some language regarding Measure 110. So I just wanted to come and just say a couple things about that. And also, you know, not, I don't expect or want necessarily a discussion right now, this is just a little bit of information. And so I put a letter to the editor in the paper that will be coming out on Thursday, basically asking you to not be in support of repeal and to not make a resolution towards a repeal for many, many different reasons. The main reason, though, is that Measure 110, or criminalizing drugs, is not an effective resolution. It hasn't been effective for 50 years with the war on drugs. So there, and just to ask you to think about it, to investigate it from all sides, to really, like, consider it a little bit more thoroughly from a health perspective, rather than a criminal perspective. There's many, many articles and reports that have come, that are online. You can easily find them, I have several right here. I even have Public Access, the Effectiveness of Compulsory Drug Treatment, a systematic review that is a research paper in the Journal, International Journal of Drug Policy, that you're more than happy to have any of these. I know you guys can look things up and research on your own, but I just thought I would give these to you as resources, if you wanted to look further. There's an article about the state ends to Measure 110 grants this month over misuse of funds. So there are issues with it, there's no doubt there's issues with it. There's an article, Measure 110 in Need of Fixes Rather Than Repeal. There's also an article, lawmakers preview possible fixes to Measure 110 in upcoming session. So they're aware that it needs revision, they're aware that there's problems. So repeal does what? Not a lot. There's also a research article from NYU's Grossman School of Medicine, that decriminalizing drug concession doesn't lead to more fatal overdoses. There's zero causal evidence that Measure 110 and overdose rates are connected at this time. So I would just like you to think about the fact that putting it back to 100% criminalization is not effective. Drug addiction is meant to be, should be, in health.
Okay, thank you, Jill.
I'll leave those with me, and then I'll just, please send them the titles or, yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda for acceptance. Park Committee Meeting Minutes for October 2023. Also, Library Board Meeting Minutes for October 2023. Any questions or discussions on these two meetings? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda for acceptance?
I'll move to consent agenda for acceptance.
Thank you, Councilor Webb, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Norman.
Councilor Wagner?
It looks like she thought she's.
We didn't hear you if you said something, Susan.
There, she's unmuted.
The volume's just gone back.
Turn your mic on.
We see you turning it on and off, but you're still not getting to us. Can you vote in the chat?
Or raise your hand.
Oh, there you go.
There you go.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, consent agenda for approval. City council meeting minutes for December 4th, 2023. Any discussion or questions? Again, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the December 4th meeting minutes?
I'll move to accept the December 4th council meeting minutes.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll second, yeah.
Seconded by Councilor Webb.
Councilor Ash? Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner?
There we go.
Motion carried.
Okay, any unfinished business tonight? Okay, moving into new business. Request for donation fireworks, page nine.
So this staff report is from me, but as I stated it, there is a representative here from the group that wants to bring back fireworks, so he might like to speak.
Yeah. My name is Eric Dewitt, I'm a local here, and yes, I'm Nisha's grandson. That's usually the first question I'm always given. Yeah, and we're all very.
Sorry for your loss.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so, trying to look for happier things, like the Fourth of July, which she loved. I obtained my professional power technician's license since last July 4th, when I realized we weren't having a show. So I am all set up with the Oregon State Fire Marshal. I have a company willing to distribute the fireworks to me. The Lions Club is going to set up a bank account to hold the funds, which we're gonna, you know, do the usual thing, put out cans around town, hit up some of the local businesses. I manage logging companies around here, so I'm gonna hit all them up, too. But somebody brought up to me that I should probably look into whether or not the city council would like to pitch in any money before year's end and your budget is set. The cost of fireworks has gone up significantly since the pandemic. There was a large shortage then. That has eased a little bit now. I've been in communication with Lauren Loomis, the gentleman who's done it for the last 10 or so years. He's gonna be with me on the first show. I've already talked to Sean, chief police fire department, and said they'll be there to support it. I've mentioned it to Josette also, so everything is in place. I know all the paperwork, I'm gonna use the same footprint that Lauren had, and he's gonna help me with the first couple shows, provided he doesn't have to do all of it himself. So, which I completely understand, now that I've done a few, it's a lot of work, so. Yeah. So that was my pitch. I'm just trying to see if it would be something of interest to the city to provide some funds for that.
So can I ask you a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
How much is your show you're planning? How much does that cost for you this time?
I'm aiming for $10,000, which is roughly double what we've ever done before.
Okay. And when do you have to have that money to them?
They're very, it was about the money at this point. They would prefer by March.
Okay.
That would be optimal.
Boy, Eric, you've answered a lot of questions I had coming into the meeting tonight, and after looking at the staff report, and I'm really optimistic, and I'm glad you're stepping up, and it's, I mean, last year, there was a lot of, oh, darn, you know, and so.
I'm one of those people.
But I only, I totally understand about the field you're in and the safety aspect of it.
Right.
And so I'm, thank you for being here tonight and answering questions I had, and I look forward to, you know, the Fourth of July coming up next year.
So we had talked about this round going into budget, that we, the city as a whole typically gets hit up for different community-wide activities. We don't have a line item specific for that in the budget. I did outline where we pulled from in the past years, if you guys did want to give a donation, that there is the money there to do it, if you wanted to do something similar to what you've done in the past. But then staff is gonna, if, with council's consensus, propose a line item where we can identify funds in the budget each year that would be at council's discretion to help pull off these community-wide things, whether it's fireworks, or if you want to help Spirit of Christmas with new lighting, whatever, but kind of a project fund so that it's identified every year, you know what's in there, and you can kind of determine what you'd like to promote or support in the community. But that'll be for next year's budget. The reason he's here asking now is, by the time we get to next year's budget, he'll have to have his money already turned in.
Yeah.
High level, what else do we usually see come out of general fund?
So in that miscellaneous expenses, Angie has nothing else, but.
Nothing planned, but I'm saying, like, typically.
Yeah, it didn't have any spending in it last year.
Okay.
The $2,000 that was in there rolled over in the past, you've given $1,000 out of that to fireworks.
Did we used to do turkeys out of there?
No, you did turkeys out of the timber fund, which is another reason to have an earmarked whatever-you-want-to-do fund for the community. Yeah. So if someone wanted to make.
Covered for this year.
Yes, we got a grant to cover that, and they got Christmas as well with that grant, so.
We got quite a bit of money to cover turkeys.
Yeah.
Is the double cost because you want it to be twice as good, or have costs actually gone up?
Costs have gone up about 25%, but I thought 10 was a nice round number that I could pull off, you know, because, and it seemed like a good time to bring it back bigger than ever. If you've ever gone to shows out of Forskillers, I think Brunnia has one that's just as good, so, and I like to do things bigger, so I was gonna go big for the first year. Any money in excess of that that is raised will be kept all by the Lions Club. I'm just a signee on it, so there's lots of dual custody. It'll just be rolled over to the next year, so.
And I did talk to InterCultural, and I didn't mention it to you, but there are a number of us, Casey and I included, I believe Dale and Donna, who would be willing to stand at the exits with the boot, because that always helps bring in money, and if people really enjoy the show and they have disposable income in their wallet, you can make a good chunk of money. So there are a lot of us that are willing to do that, if that's something you guys want to bring back, because we used to, you know, throw $20 to $40 every time we'd walk out, because it was a great show that they were putting on, so.
That'd be great.
There's a lot of volunteers, so just let us know, and I'll round up some people.
And I know Randy has had a donation jar in his, at the market last couple of years, and.
He said he was going to make a donation.
Our community always steps up.
Yeah.
And then, you know, after talking to Randy, he sort of highlighted how much outside of his people this brings in here.
Oh, yeah.
July 4th, his business was way down, so, I mean, it's a pretty good boon to the economy or.
Yep.
Well, and if we don't have it here, then people travel elsewhere with their barbecues, or go to someone who's close to a show. We should get that money here.
Yep.
So would anyone like to make a motion to?
Donate to the fireworks.
Donate money out of the general fund for next 2024's fireworks.
I just, before we move to that, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make sure that all the councilors were comfortable with, I mean, it is the public's money.
Yeah.
There are some people that. Yeah, fireworks.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people that, I mean, it's a no-win situation here to, we're talking about, if we did $1,000, it's basically a dollar per resident out of our funds, so. I would be supportive of that.
I would, I think the boost, like, keeping it local, right, keeping dollars local, that is worth it for our businesses as well.
I'm for it. And an extra line item.
Yeah, yeah.
We'd already talked about.
All right, I'll make a motion then. Mr. Mayor? To donate $1,000, is that what everybody was looking for? Out of the general fund miscellaneous expense line item for the 2024 July fireworks show. So we give you a start.
Perfect, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Ash.
Sorry, one second.
Forget about Susan.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Wagner? Motion carried.
Thanks, I'll get in touch with you all when they cut the check.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have to take off since I have to be working.
Yeah. You're no obligation to stay.
Thank you.
Staff report, work session schedule, page 10.
So the staff report I have for you is from me. It's pretty straightforward, you have a couple sessions coming up, and I was hoping to get your absolute work dates so that I can schedule around it. And that will be for February and March. And the lines three, which I, after printing, realized it's not very clear, that means no. I think I'll put it in red next time, kind of blends in with the other lines, so.
What else would it mean?
I don't know. Those are no days.
Just has a little credit.
Well, it kind of blends in, it's not like.
You can't tell if it's.
Blends in with the lines, yeah.
Yeah.
So council rules first, let's.
Just tell me dates that don't work for you, I will round it.
So let me clarify this, are there two work sessions you're looking for?
There's a few sessions, yeah, but I just want to know the dates that do not work for you, and I will schedule around that.
Well, the week of the March, or spring break.
Which is what week?
The 25th through 9th of March should be not, probably.
So that's a no week.
I can't do the 13th of February, and the 14th is Valentine's Day.
Put that as a no-go.
Sorry, I like my husband.
What?
I know, it's weird, he ate half the Cringles, so I'm asking second thoughts, but.
I didn't know he was gonna ask you out to dinner.
Oh, he won't.
I mean, making the dinner, but regardless, she's eating it with him.
February 23rd is out for me.
Any days in March?
Oh, I can't do the 25th. Sorry, February.
23rd is a Friday on.
Oh, February, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Dale?
6th is out for me.
And the other days?
March 12th is out, and 25th.
Guess I got that, I got that whole 25th week out.
That whole week's out for me.
Any other days, Brick? Any other days, Donald?
I can't think of any for me.
Susan, will you just send me an email with your no days?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, I can work off that.
Okay, moving on. Orders and resolutions. No. Correspondence, city-county dinner, clascanai.
Nope.
Back up, Mr. Mayor.
Correspondent.
Business from departments.
Oh, geez. What would I do without you, council president?
I like the idea, though, let's go.
He's speeding us up.
Business from the departments.
So as I stated, Sean is not feeling well, so he, if you have questions specific about his police report, you could email him or leave him a message on the phone.
I'm sorry, Chris.
Chris is here.
He was trying to skip you, too.
I'm reading the police report, sorry.
That thing up there is unfortunate.
Pretty nice report, actually.
From Public Works? It's snazzy, from Public Works?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought it was really well done.
Trying a new thing.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
I like the choice of fonts. Being in the printing business.
Well, three professions. Are we on to that?
Yeah, we are.
So, did you draw the short straw? Because I see a red hat in the boat out there in the.
Oh, yeah, I'm in the boat.
Yeah, I figured that was you.
Yeah, no, that was fine.
Uh, Surrogan?
Yeah.
There's a pic in the.
Can you explain that?
In the back.
The photo?
Well, but yeah, just what you guys did there, how did you anchor that in?
So it came on a pallet, a big pallet, and then it was all folded up and stuff and ready to go, kind of like a sausage, I guess, and then we strung it out, walked it with the backhoe around the lagoon and pulled it tight, and then it was, there's a float line and a lead line, it's like a chain at the bottom, and then, so we shimmyed out there in the boat and untied it, and then it dropped, you know, little by little, and the curtain fell down into the lagoon, so.
So in your report, says that you noticed a difference in your chlorine?
Yeah, we do, this time of the year, we do chlorine residual testing into the treated wastewater into the nailing, so we have a limit there, and it's been, sometimes we're over the limit, and so this has already helped. We haven't had a high reading since we put it in, so.
Right.
So it saved chlorine?
Yeah, we, yeah.
Yeah, well, it was, it was basically shortchanging and coming right down the one. Yeah, well, it was, it was basically shortchanging and coming right down the one side to the outfall, and so the chlorine wasn't having enough time to dissipate, so this curtain makes the water go a long way to the outfall.
And it sends it also through the, the bubblers.
Yeah, more treatment with the bubblers for ammonia.
Are we looking for, being set up for the curtain grouting on manholes?
January.
It's January, and I think Jonathan's been pressure washing or cleaning the insides.
Yeah, we've got almost all of them cleaned out, there's a couple that we couldn't drive to, so we got to go back to those, and then we got to check again with all this rain we had, make sure that they're still okay, but should be good.
Good. Yeah, giving you these compliments, very nice report.
They were going to be here in December, but then they had some emergency jobs, so we got pushed out to January.
Yeah.
Chris, or Josette, you could probably answer this question. 10, 15 years ago, did we do this thorough job of checking water valves and replacing? I, I mean, it seems like in the last two years, our crew's been really busy, it was just the equipment's wearing out, or, or we weren't quite focused in the past on, on our system, or?
Well, I think a lot of the time, we were playing catch-up, right? The deferred maintenance of things had the previous crew playing catch-up, like constantly just having to deal with it, where now, things are kind of at a status, and we can go investigate things and deal with the one-off missing. I think they intended to do it, Mayor, but I think they just playing catch-up for years of deferment.
Didn't have the staff?
Well, they had only three at that time, when I was up there, and they were just chasing problems, just finding out fires.
Putting out...
So you can't really maintain or inspect if you're just running around, trying to solve.
This is good.
I think even, I don't think it's been in the last 10 years, the last five years, catching up on the meters.
Yeah.
Be more accurate on income and all that, it's probably been...
All the ground-truthing of the accounts and changing the software and really reading everything, yeah.
Digital meters now, they're different.
The radio, we're slowly, slowly getting to the radio reads, yeah, that's what we're installing now, we can't, we don't have enough to read them that way yet, so we're still working with meter readers, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, all the forward movement.
Yeah.
But we've got more accurate meters and got rid of a bunch of problems that they don't have to go chase.
Right.
You know, and bring in better revenue because we're getting accurate readings.
Yeah.
Yeah, good job.
Thank you, Chris, good job.
Does Sue, does Sue have any questions?
They're really tied them out with the problem.
Oh, she must not. She'll email Chris or drop him.
Hey, can we move on to ordinances and resolutions?
We need to skip that part.
Okay. Correspondence, Josette, or Stephanie.
You guys were supposed to bring your RSVPs to me, if we remember.
I gave you mine, right?
So you and Susan. Anybody else?
Two for me.
And Donald held up two fingers, did you get that?
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Dale's not buying in.
So the, the plus twos, please, give me your money so it can be included, or just pay them directly for your spouses, just let me know which way you want to do it.
So you got time? Dale says it's not January 10th yet, he doesn't have to tell you.
Well, then, then you won't be on the RSVP when I send it to her.
Do you know, if you're going?
I don't know, I haven't talked to Donna.
Okay, give it to me by the first week in January.
Okay.
So withhold her, her RSVP, so you can send it all at once.
It helps when you're the organizer to have early headcount, so you can set up the space and food and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did they have a cost amount?
You know, it doesn't stay on here. I'll let you know as soon as I have it, it's usually around 25, $23, is what they try to keep it at, so.
Okay.
It's a really neat venue, too, if you've never been there, you should really go see the, the Klascanai, at the theater.
The theater?
Oh, at the tender, yeah.
The Burke and Phillips?
Yes.
Oh, you're interested, aren't you?
I've been there.
Oh, yes.
Okay, city administrator report.
Okay, so I don't have a date yet, I've been communicating with DQ about testing the old, well, up by the old dump, but I don't have a date of when they're going to do that. The SCA grant, we have the signed agreement now back from ODOT, and so we're going to be getting bids for that chip ceiling and then the asphalting that we presented to you when we applied for the grant. FEMA Cav visit, the project is kind of stalled because we're needing to get a new planner to change Title IX in the floodplain section, we received only one planning RFP, so we canceled the RFP because they were a firm out of Washington with no organ experience, and just, we need someone that knows organ code and has expertise in that, so we're going to be going back out again and specifically calling planning firms, asking them to bid. We sent emails, but that, we're gonna have to maybe show up in person. The ODOT ADA project, so they will be doing, in town, doing inspections, I don't know why they would pick this time of year, but sometime around the 20th, with, so if you see people measuring and doing different things, that's who it is, is the ADA crew for the right-of-way, yeah. And I pushed back on the two most dangerous crosswalks, and the right-of-way person is pushing it up the chain, because I really don't want our kids, one of the crosswalks they're putting in is across Highway 47 at Texas, and that's super dangerous, because if you come going 35 up the hill, you're on a kid before you see him, and we want all our students to be crossing at the blinking light on the highway, so that one, and then the other one that I talked to them about is they want one coming off the corner of Rose Avenue to Rob's, where the gas station Little Island is, that also is extremely dangerous to me, so we push those up the chain, asking for them to re-review the line of sight distance and everything for safety, so, and, you know, if we have to put our own signs that say, this crosswalk is here, but the city of Vernonia would not like you to use it because we don't deem it safe, I'm happy to make signs and put them at the crosswalks if they want to put them in, but that's where we're at with ADA. We did get notice that we were awarded the CDBG sewer springboard project money, so that's 2.25 million to do all the improvements and repairs. Lower Columbia Engineering is currently producing the RFP, and then we're gonna publish our environmental review, which is, we have to have it so many days published for the public to come review it if they would like, so we're gonna do that simultaneous, get all that stuff done while they're waiting to give us back the signed contract, that takes about 60 days, so we're gonna try and get some stuff accomplished while they're doing that. I just realized I skipped over the ODF docs, we, I sat in on that Zoom meeting on the 15th, and we were awarded the $186,000 for new dock platforms, and, which includes a walk-on dock at the boat launch. And, oh, I had a Zoom meeting that's not on here with the planning firm NV5 is who won the architectural landscape design project for the Vernonia Lake campground, so I've spoken with him, I issued them the notice of intent to award, and then on the 20th, I'll be able to send them their notice of award and sign the contract. He asked me when the OPRD large grant cycle closes, and I said April 1st, because our final design by him is due April 3rd, and he's like, I can have it, I can have it done, you should apply for that construction grant. So he, because our first round was going to be primitive, which is a whole bunch of earthwork and gravel, right, and he's like, I think you can, I think we can have the plans to a point where you could turn them in and just need little tweaks at the end, but have all of the elements, so that would be a restroom, right there, a handicap restroom by the wagon wheel campground, so that the handicap dock would have accessibility to it, kind of the more solidified sites, water, sewer, the restroom, and all of it, so that's where we're going. He's, he's gonna aim to have the, the drawings done early enough for us to apply, which will make Parks Committee happy, because they didn't like that our design was gonna encroach on yet another season to ask, and since they paid for the planning grant, you'd be kind of queued up to get the construction grant. Granted, it wouldn't be till 2025, would be the building year, if that makes sense, so it's just the asking and kind of getting started part would be in 2024. So that's all I got, unless you guys have something. Oh, the, the entrance sign and the light at the lake are going to be dealt with this Wednesday, and they're gonna put a plug-in off of that panel as well, because that, the Spirit of Christmas people were really upset, they had decorations there, but no plug-in to plug into, so while he's there and putting a panel in and fixing the light, then he's just gonna put a plug-in, so they can plug in lights and make it decorated there, too. And then just a reminder, I am gonna be out of the office tomorrow for medical, and then out the rest of the week, and I will be here next week, and most of my staff will not be, just flopping weeks of holiday.
You got the short straw.
Well, they were like, just ask council for it off, and I'm like, well, I have, I can get a lot done if I'm, nobody's, you know, I'm just dealing with one payment once in a while and focus, so.
Good. Thank you, Josette, any, any other questions for Josette?
Nope.
Susan?
She can email him.
Yeah.
It's more about her observing now.
Nope.
CDBG.
CDBG.
It's in the written report. I said, yes, we got it. Great.
Okay. Thank you, Josette. Items from the mayor and councilors. I'd like to take this opportunity, this is our last council meeting of the year, and thank everyone for a good year, and I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, so, look forward to next year and getting on with the business, I think, you know, with obtaining this springboard grant, that's huge, and being able to maybe even complete it by year's end next year is just awesome.
Yeah, if we can get the prepped up and done and be ready for the inward water window, it'll be good.
You know, there, and I, since, since the forest stags have opened, I, I mean, the town is buzzing.
Right, a restaurant will do that every time.
Of course, there's other businesses as well that are doing really well, and, and I think Vernonia's doing really well on the downtown end of it. It sure looks nice, thank you again for your time and efforts in, in decorating, and Public Works putting up decorations, and Stephanie and Sandra and Josette decorating in front of City Hall's.
Never looked so nice.
And thank you to Stacey Felster for the big wreath.
Yes.
Above, and looks really great, and keep up the good work, look forward to seeing you next year. That's all I have.
All right.
Action item summary, hate to ask for that after my big speech.
I know. Well, I'm, the only thing I have is that we'll be, I'll be getting the titles of these and sending you links to these articles that were presented to you and your topics from the floor.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay. We'll adjourn this meeting at 7:45, meeting adjourned.